Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the committee of the whole to order for this evening. We have a very full agenda, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. I think we have everyone here, almost everyone here. So we are going to begin first with the operating and sub-operating lease agreements for the Family First Community Center. And I think that's Kelly.
That is. Thank you. Thank you, Council President McGurven and council members. Good to see you this evening. Really excited. Our team is really excited to bring these forward to you. These operating agreements for the Family First Community Center. I have to say that it was truly a team effort from the school district and their attorneys, the Health Point team and their attorneys, as well as the city administration and their attorneys. Working through these agreements was just, it was fantastic. So to remind council, you, as well as the Renton School District Board approved in September of 2020, the ground lease, which is between the city and the school district, and a reminder that there's no rent that goes, that's paid for, for that land use, and then the sub-ground lease between the city and Health Point. Both of the leases, both of these ground leases referred to operating agreements within the lease, one between the school district and then one again between the city and Health Point. These leases, the operating agreements covers the responsibilities for the parties for programming and operations that are included, but not limited to regular building and site maintenance, short and long-term repairs, utilities, use of parking, dedicated use of space, shared programming, building procedures, and allocations of those responsibilities regarding the shared use. And Health Point being the operating partner will be responsible for all of the operational costs and allocate those accordingly to the other partners. Long-term major maintenance defined in the agreement, the city had previously hired a consultant that established a 20-year forecast for the capital maintenance. Health Point will be responsible for 80% of those costs. And once the construction, the actual construction is complete, then there'll be an adjustment of the annual payment that will be set into a reserve account and that will be reviewed at five-year increments and made adjustments accordingly, depending on how costs or whatever rise or fall potentially. With the Family First Building being a brand-new facility, we do not anticipate needs for capital maintenance for quite some time, which allows for this reserve fund to be built. So council, there were five conditions that were set forth in the ground lease, and with the approval of these operating leases, that will fulfill that final condition and will also allow for that full execution of the construction project. And as we put in the issue paper, those, they go hand in hand together. So the school district will be reviewing and requested approval this coming Wednesday for these operating agreements. And with that, we ask that council approve these agreements this evening, and I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Kelly. And we do have a committee report to, for approval tonight. Do we have any questions? No questions. Well, I am super excited that this is all coming together. I think everyone else is as well. That it's starting to get more real and that, you know, these, these sort of agreements are coming together. I know, and I know that this item is also on the school board agenda for this coming Wednesday as well, too. So getting this all done in time so that, as you said, we can keep everything on schedule. So, very good. Well, if there are no more questions on this, we will move to the second item, which I am certain there will be some discussion on. And that is our solid waste update, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Martin Pestuscha.
Good evening, Council President McGurven, the members of the city council. We are here tonight to review the events the last couple of weeks that impacted the delivery of our solid waste services throughout the city, how the city responded, and what opportunities we have to improve that these services or response in a future event. So joined by me this evening is Ron Sroka, our utility director, and Linda Knight, our solid waste coordinator. So let me go ahead and share my screen here. All right. So just an overview quickly of what we'll cover. We're gonna talk a little bit about the residential solid waste collection system, what happened in December and January, how we responded, what continuing conversations we're having with Republic Services, and what opportunities for improvements we have. So just as a recap, City Rent and Residential Collection works on every other week, collection of garbage and recycling, and weekly collection of organics. And organics is defined as food waste, food packaging, I guess, food, paper-based food packaging, as well as organics from tree waste, yard, yard plants, house plants, those sorts of things. So it's really anything that's organic goes in that organics container. It's a little different than the traditional garbage and recycling of the past, because we've really taken the wet components out of the garbage and moved them into the organic side, for the most part. The city has split into two halves for garbage recycling collection. The north half is collected on recycling, greenware, organics, and trash one week. And at the same, during the same week, organics are collected, the south end. And then the next week would be a switch where the north end would be collecting organics only, and then organics, recycling, and trash is collected in the south end. So the same drivers are utilized for both the north and south garbage and recycling routes because of switch on the food-based. So just a map, sort of shows the division between the north half, the city and the south half of the city. It's a little, it's roughly equivalent, you can see the days of the week that the routes are collected. So just a little bit about the every-other-week collection of garbage and recycling history. So the residential garbage and recycling collection program was adopted by the council and implemented in 2009. This came as a result of a couple of issues. One is that pilot study that was done in 2008 in Renton neighborhoods to determine how much additional could be, how much different material could be moved away from garbage or landfill and moved into a compost facility, which is where the compostable products are taken. So it saves valuable landfill space and reduces the amount of things being thrown away. At the time, waste management was a contractor when this was implemented. What happened was it also resulted in cost savings in solid waste repairs, because we weren't paying for weekly service for both compost and trash, I should say, compostables and trash, as well as recycling on a weekly basis. We were able to divert those to an every-other-week basis and resulted in cost savings. And this again, as we've talked about, promotes waste prevention, recycling and composting. By having folks, the weekly composting takes the stinky portion out of the garbage and puts it into the organics material, which would be the ones that would generally create odors and have vector problems with them associated. This time of year, probably not so much in odors or vector problems, but in the summertime, you tend to have those things when the heat hits, so those kind of materials. So picking them up on a weekly basis is important. So our current contract with Republic Services was approved by the council in 2016. And this continues the residential every-other-week collection program. So there are some provisions in the contract for recovery in the event of inclement weather. Missed residential customers recovered the Saturday following the miss. Alternate disposal option plan required Republic for extended increment, inclement weather events. The typical inclement weather events in this collections are not eligible for credit for the city contract, because they're in theory collected immediately thereafter. And then customers receive information regarding inclement weather plans and policy annually. Then Republic manages the customer accounts to the billing of the city. So Republic bills the customer, collects both the trash collection component as well as the disposal component, remits those dollars back to us, we pull out the disposal component, because we save money by paying the county directly, King County directly for the disposal. So there isn't a mark upon those provisions. And also in this contract includes enhanced strike provisions. So there's a strike contingency plan required if it extends for extended period of time. Performance for the impact of late disruption on the city and the city's customers and customer credits. So let's talk a little bit about what happened. So the first event on January 26th, we had a snowstorm and a week of very cold weather. The storm hit, our crews were out plowing the roads. The unfortunate part of that, normally in advanced snowstorms, you may have a little bit of dry weather where our folks can get out and put de-icer on the road, the main arterial roads, try and reduce the buildup of ice materials. Well, this, this turned around so quickly where it was raining one day and then all of a sudden came ice the next, I mean, snow the next. And we weren't able to put the ice route, otherwise it would have just washed away. So that impacted our ability and the ability of the roads to get cleared in such a timely manner, or I guess as quickly as we normally would. It also impacted what happened by the long cold spell that we had that week, because the snow events just happened on that Sunday and possibly in the Monday. But then we had four or five days of continued cold temperatures in the twenties and thirties. And what that did was created a fast recycle. And by doing that, the solid waste collection services were not available to occur because of the roads and the hills, residential neighborhoods, cars parked on the streets, and the concerns about those large trucks driving down the streets and trying to operate in that zone with, you know, snow, ice on the roads, again, tremendous amount of ice and slippage that may occur. They just felt it wasn't a safe environment for them to operate. So what happened that week, the garbage and recycling was missed for all the folks in the south end. They should say the garbage recycling and organics were missed for all the, for all the folks in the south route. And then the organics were missed in the north route, so citywide. So normally, as I said, in the contract requires if we have those events, they come back on Saturday and collect the missed materials. Unfortunately, in this particular case, there's three days in the contract when they're, when they're considered holiday for Republic Services. Those are the days that King County landfills and transfer stations are closed. That's Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. So the week after, Saturday after that week was New Year's Day. So therefore, even if they were able to operate on that Saturday, they could not, because they had no place to take the garbage that was collected. So essentially, through that ability to take all those resources that would be utilized Monday through Friday and utilize them on Saturday, help with collections, and that wasn't, wasn't able to occur, because the facilities weren't open for them to take the waste. And then what we tried to do is provide, customers would provide an update on the daily basis on the website, rebel calls by Republic Services, and then we had web postings and social media alerts that were posted as well. And then our staff were answering phone calls, and so those came in. And then back on January 3rd and the 7th, after the snowstorm on the second, or I should say, snowstorm, the rains, rains on the second that really loosened up the materials on the street and really freed that stuff up and started to melt the ice in a quick, very quick hurry. And then along with that, the plow routes that got out there. The waste, Republic Services were able to start back up the process of garbage and recycling collection for all the north routes. And then the organic collection was done citywide. So the folks in the south end missed one week organics, but again, they were not getting into recycling and trash. So, and then the following week, which would have been two weeks after that first snowstorm, when the folks in the south end didn't have any trash recycling service, Republic Services started collecting the Monday and Tuesday routes on January 10th and 11th. So those routes were collected. So the garbage and the recycling that was missed two weeks ago for those Monday, Tuesday customers were collected. And the organic citywide was collected. Then what happened on the 12th, Wednesday the 12th, was the labor disruption. This is where Team Service employees from down in San Diego, Republic employees from San Diego, teachers that have, were have been in dispute with Republic Services since mid-December, came up to Seattle and protests at the Republic facilities. And since those drivers that worked for Republic are all part of the same Team Service Union, they refused to cross the picket line. So what that impacted the folks in the south end, that on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, customers who were scheduled to be collecting that week and had missed two weeks ago because of the snow event, they were now going on four weeks without any collection services. In addition, citywide, organics for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday were not collected. So those folks in the north end didn't have their organics collected those three days either as well. So the Republic didn't have any resources to be able to round the routes at that time. They started to take a look at bringing people in from out of state, supervisors who worked elsewhere, who were now, who still had their commercial driver's license for it to drive, but that was relatively small con. And this labor disruption not only affected us, but affected all the Republic Services in Puget Sound region and the north end, such as Bellevue, Kirkland, as well as cities down south here, ourselves, Kent, other cities. So it was a region-wide strike and impact. So how do we respond? So we really, again, worked with waste, I'm sorry, worked with Republic Services on the robo calls, on websites and social media. We responded to customers' emails, phones, and voicemail. Staff was calling up to eight o'clock. To try and, try and answer some of the questions and concerns. After the first snow event, we ended up conducting a couple of garbage collection events where we had a truck, Republic Service bring a truck out on January 5th at Liberty Park, so that people could able to bring their trash. So folks had missed and were concerned about having to wait after the Christmas holiday to be able to dispose material. So we, best we could do is get a truck out at Teasdale Park or Liberty Park and have them there on the 5th. And then on January 8th, we also did another one event at Thomas Teasdale Park focused on the south neighborhoods, because that was the area that had missed the recycling and trash collection the previous two-week period. So we knew that that was, or the two-week period after Christmas. So we knew that there was concern there. In those events, we had a lot of customers come out. And then as we had the strike occur, we realized those people in the south end were going on four to five weeks without any, any trash recycling services. We heard a lot of complaints about that. So what we did, we worked with our folks, our partners in Parks and Recreation, again, utilizing, be able to use a parking lot at Thomas Teasdale Park on the 1450. Over those four days, we ended up having over 1,900 customers participate and basically collected over 50 tons of garbage as a way to try and provide some immediate impact. In addition, when we, when we did get the strike ended, which was on that Saturday, we looked at the, the collection of resources that we had available, and we really realized that we needed to work with Republic on trying to make sure the folks in the south end have gone four weeks without collection now, to be able to get the trash, prioritize the trash recycling material collected for those folks. The folks in the north end had only missed, and these were only the three days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of last week, had only missed the organic collection there. So we, we made a determination to suspend our organic collection citywide for January 17th through the 19th and asked Republic to redeploy those drivers, which they were able to negotiate with the drivers. It was a great idea and a way to, to basically service back the community, get, get back and the routes established. They deployed the organic drivers to the south Renton garbage and recycling routes on Monday through Wednesday. So folks that were missed last Monday or were first missed on that Monday of the strike, I'm sorry, first missed on that Wednesday of the strike, their garbage and recycling was collected on that Monday. The folks who were missed on Thursday, the week prior, their garbage and recycling collected on Tuesday. And the folks on Friday who had missed the previous week, their garbage and recycling was collected on Wednesday. The idea and intent of that was to try and provide those services, get them back and, and materials off the street and provide some relief to the residents who had missed those services for going on four weeks there. And then the other thing we did, we authorized extended collection hours during recovery. So in that regard, because it was larger than average loads out there, because the trash recycling was built up for a number of weeks, and the time it takes to fill those trucks up and then take them to the transfer station, come back and run another route again, we authorized the collection hours to go beyond the normal 5:00 PM deadline to 8:00 PM, to try and allow them to collect more stops on a day-to-day basis. So issues that we're continuing to talk with Republic Services about is negotiating the issue of customer credit. Again, there's provision in the contract that when there is a strike, there is a credit that provided. So we've got to look at which people were impacted and how much they were impacted, and what that credit means that they're billed for having ongoing conversations with them about that. What customers have asked for and demanded, what is the kind of concerns that we've heard from the customers? Every other week, collections come up, and why is the city running every other week collection? Why was my route missed? And some of the other comments were fire Republic Services, and then I want a credit for this collection. So we've been doing it again. We have allowed the Public Services to focus on recovery operations last week. We'll engage them in conversations to, again, talk about those issues identified above and evaluate a response to potential contract amendments, and sure, we don't end up in a situation like this in the future. So to talk a little bit about the benefits of every other week collection. When every week collection was brought in, it was not, it was brought in at a time, 2008, 2009, at a time when the city was, and the whole country was coming out of the last recession. So costs were a tremendous concern. And so the idea was by reducing that to trash and recycling to every other week, and organics to weekly collection, we were able to save on reduced cost of landfill and reduced cost of equipment, fuel, and labor, because you didn't have as many trucks and people running throughout the routes on a daily basis. We also have reduced the landfill impacts, because materials now be collected on a weekly basis for organics, which was not just the traditional green waste, but also food waste and which is one of the larger components of residential disposal. Those materials were then able to be moved and taken away from the landfill and disposed of at Cedar, Cedar Hills, I'm sorry, Cedar Grove Recycling. So those materials could be composted and turned into a reusable product. What that does is by moving the materials away from the landfill, it helped extend the landfill life, because we are not longer extending as much material into that landfill, as well as reducing the amount of greenhouse gas emissions, because what happens from decomposition of organic material is you get methane gas. And one of the more expensive propositions for any landfills, the collection methane gas, but to you put those collection systems in place, that gas offloads into the atmosphere. In addition, not having as many trucks run through the neighborhood reduced noise and impact traffic impacts in the neighborhoods. And again, it helps the healthy communities, again, less traffic, traffic to the neighborhoods, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And as we again talked about, it fosters environmental stability through resource optimization and reuse of materials that provide environmental and economic benefit. Again, a compostable material can be used in landscaping, other soil amendments, et cetera, as opposed to going into a landfill and taking up valuable land for space. So after the first year of the every-other-week collection, what we found was the per-person garbage disposal decreased by 20%, 26%. So what we've seen is a large amount of reduction in the amount of garbage going to the landfill. What we saw was our recycling tons increased by 24%, or the organics tons collected increased by 29%. So we saw the program is working and really made, really achieved the results that we were looking for, which was an environmental benefits, unique, reduce costs as well as decrease materials into the landfill. So change, challenges of an every-other-week collection program, the frequency of collection, you hear concerns about trash recycling. Part of this we saw was, you know, coming out of this particular event, it's probably an opportunity to re-educate our residents again about what constitutes organics. It's not just green waste anymore, it's green waste and recyclables. I mean, it's our green waste and organics and food waste. Getting people to put those items into our, our, our gas collections on a weekly basis, so that the amount of material going into trash collection is reduced, and it's really those things that can only be left alone. And again, the community understanding of our solid waste systems we talked about. And again, our bundle rates really include just more than recycling collection. So it's not just the every-other-week collection of recycling and trash and the weekly collection of organics, but it also includes our clean sheet program, buy special cleanup collections, including both the items for folks, our residential neighbors. It's our city litter response team that goes around and cleans up our parkways and areas, our roadways around town of all the trash and debris. And it's waste prevention, recycling, organics, has its waste education outreach. So where we think there are areas for improvement, we need to review our existing inclement, inclement weather and strike provisions. Again, this was an unusual circumstance in the fact that the first event happened the week before one of our clothes, one of the few days, three days a year that the landfills and transportations are closed, and our operators, our Republic Service operators are not able to exist. So when those things occur, we've got to have a plan to be able to respond to those and ensure that we don't have the situation again. And then followed two weeks later, two weeks to the same week impacted the same residents by having that strike provision. And again, back to developing a plan to deal with those debts. We also need to look at improving our customer communication plan for inclement weather, something events that disrupt services and strikes. In the event that we had, you know, a natural disaster of some kind, or again, back to the snow events and strikes, we need to just make sure that we have a very good communication system outlined and laid out, so that those messages can get out as quickly as possible. And then develop an advanced implementation plans for alternative collection schedules, get a response to the customers' needs. Again, back to having to work with Republic in a very short time in terms of, you know, can we cancel the organic collection, move those resources into collection of trash recycling? So we, by the fact that we can develop those plans and advance and have those, then we were able to address the customers' needs and let them know when they were going to get collected. And I think that was the hardest part for everybody, was knowing when it was going to happen. So at this point in time, we're certainly open to any questions you have, and these are the numbers for Republic Service Customer Services for the residential and commercial that folks may have, and certainly we're able to answer any questions that you have between myself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Martin. And I do see a couple of hands right away. So firsthand I see up is council member Prince, or?
Thank you, Mr. President. Martin, thank you for that presentation. I really appreciate it. It was very comprehensive. I have a couple of questions, and I have a bunch of questions, but a couple that I'm gonna start with, and then I'll let my colleagues chime in. Do we know how many cities in King County do every-other-week service?
And I'll let Linda Knight answer that. I think there's a number of cities. It's not such as King County, there's a couple in King.
Well, I'm asking King County specifically, since that's where we're located. Do we know any of the cities in King County that do every-other-week service?
We are, we are unique in King County in that we do every-other-week garbage and recycling. There are cities that, you know, do every-other-week recycling, or some do every-other-week organics, but we are unique in that we do the every-other-week garbage and recycling with the weekly organics.
Okay, thank you. And then, so when we started this in 2009, I mean, Renton's grown exponentially since then. Have we done any continuing education of our residents about the compostables? Because I will tell you, the emails, the phone calls, and the stops that I've received just out in the community about this, when it was happening, it didn't seem like a lot of people were using the compostables for their food waste. It felt like they were using the trash for their food waste. Yeah, I think that. Any, any continuing education on that?
I think Linda can talk a little more about that, but I think that's also, council member, the message that we saw, but I was that we, I think we need to take it and renew our effort. It's not that Linda hasn't been doing education, but I think in the time that's happened from when we first went there, so I'm sure we've got a lot new, a lot of new residents, as you indicated. We've also had people that turned over, people who may not have been here during that time. And so we think we, you know, while they may get the information when they subscribe to the service, I think we need to do an ongoing basis to make sure that we keep people aware and really focus on understanding what the compostable container is, because again, if you understand it and operate it correctly, it really reduces the amount of garbage or smelly garbage that you can have when you are trash.
And then my last question for now, do we have any current up-to-date data on how many residents are utilizing compostables? I'm guessing the answer to that is no.
Or what was the question? I'm sorry.
How many of our residents are currently, any up-to-date data on how many of our residents are using compostables versus putting their food waste in the garbage? I know we saw some data early in the slide, but do we have any updated data that's not from like 2009, 2010?
Right, right, right. So it's difficult to say who's putting it in and who's not putting it in, but I will say that the statistics in terms of the tonnage volumes of organics collected for, like, if you look at the annual tonnage versus garbage, you can see that we're holding strong in terms of customers participating in that. And my guess is the volume of organics does include a lot of food waste. We do hear from people who were concerned about their organics not being collected. So, you know, part of what I think happens in terms of how people refer to their garbage and their organics is that some people call their organics their garbage and vice versa. I mean, they look at it as a whole system, but I don't have the stats in front of you in terms of the volume. I, I don't know, Martin, do you, do you have that chart that I sent over to you that, or I don't know if you're able to share that or not, basically?
But it's, I think it was compared to the residential, you know, current, what are our current, and I don't know if I can bring that chart up now.
Yeah, basically, I think I was looking at sort of like, in the past, we had about 40% of our, of the residential, of the residential solid waste, that's breaking up into those three categories, recycling, garbage, and organics. And pre every other week, the garbage was about, I'm hoping I get this right, around 45% of the makeup pre every other week and organics was, there we go. Thanks, Martin. So you can see here the pre every other week residential solid waste was about that gold area was 44% of all of the residential solid waste with the organics. Well, we used to call it yard waste, 33%. And then this on the right side is 2021's total annual tonnage. You can see that the makeup is now dropped down to 32% of that is garbage and 45% of that is organics. You know, the recycle looks to be holding pretty steady, but that 45% of organics is made up. I, that really holds true with adding the food waste into it. So you can see that change in terms of what people are putting in their container. And so, so it is being used and it's being used actually, I think, at a good rate. I mean, we've had consultants kind of blown away by how many tons of organics we collect in a year. So.
And Linda, how many tons a year do we, does, is that compose our solid waste system between organics, trash and recycling?
Oh, gosh. Don't know if I have it right here. We might want to go on to the next question if you want to know. I can always.
Just to try and provide some scale.
Right. Let's see. Are you saying of all solid waste, we're just a residential?
Okay, Linda, let's move on.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. President, I don't have any other questions for now.
All right. Councilmember Alberston, I see your hand raised next.
Thank you, Mr. President. So that actually was a great question, Councilmember, Councilmember Prince, as far as the other cities who's doing the fact that we're uniquely given that answer. The first thing I would say, I, it'd be nice to see some sort of data comparison with, you know, since Renton is unique in their, their uses, their nonuses there, or whatever it is to see, to really get a better feel for the impact it's having. So that's a question that just came up in my mind. It'd be nice to look at, but the point I was going to make, it kind of ties into what you were saying, Martin. I don't think it's just a question of what is, is compost. I think it's also a question, once, once again, the frequency of, of the message. But the third component is the why. And because, you know, I don't, I don't think a lot of people know the landfill capacity, hey, your kids won't have it in 2036 or whatever it is. I'd like to see a more comprehensive, because I understand the reasoning and that sort of thing. I like to see a more comprehensive message that, that really, you know, hits that next layer of individuals that thinks, well, hey, you know, my food's gonna, it's gonna disintegrate in the, in the landfill. That's fine. Why do I need to put it here? I think that may be the other disconnect that may bring another wave of individuals to, to use it. So that's my, that's my point. My question that I want to throw out, you know, if we're trying to eliminate the garbage, why wasn't, why wasn't the recycle actually made every week as well? Because I mean, I have, you know, my recycle is always ready to rock and roll in two weeks. And I had a lot of people who've told me the same thing, kind of the opposite, like, why are they collecting these organics? And my recycle, all my Amazon packages and all that kind of good stuff, you know, I always fill this thing up. So, you know, when that whole thing came around, why not have a recycle every week? Why was it that made? Because I'm sure that will take away some other percentage of garbage as well that people just kind of throw out.
I think there's a couple of reasons. I'll let Linda chime in after I'm done, but just as, as a whole, recycling it, you know, I think we have to look at the time it was put in place in 2009 and the buying patterns of residents now in 2021. And I think we've seen that, you know, back in 2009, Amazon was primarily delivering books at that point in time and not into the income and the types of home delivery that they and other vendors provide at this point in time. So I've seen a complete switch in how this whole, how operations work. In addition, during, you know, up until 2017, I think there was much more liberal interpretation of what recyclables were being taken and what was being able to be marketed. Since that time, we've had the whole issue of China's sword and the inability to export materials or other countries to import materials from the United States that would traditionally would have been recycled. Things like plastic bags, you know, used to be able to recycle. Those are no longer recyclable. Those are considered trash now. As well as other materials, but I think we've seen the volume impact just based upon how we operate as, as a, as a society anymore in terms of the amount of recyclables going up. I think the other issue is obviously odor and vectors are a problem with, with organics. And when you have those things, you know, that food waste in those containers, again, not a problem in January, but it's a problem in August or July, when the heat hits and those containers sit there and the earth starts to boil in those containers and, and, you know, sort of does, through, through the organic process that it does. You know, what you'll see is a concern about that. And so that was why the weekly collection, those materials was important because we know that people are constantly throwing out food and disposing of old material or old, old food items as well as their organic material. And to get those off the street and collected on a weekly basis was much more important. And we made, you know, obviously, could we add another route? Yes, we could. But what that means is increase cost. Cause now we've got to buy, you know, get another truck, we gotta get more drivers and take those materials if we're going from a weekly basis. Because again, we look at our stream divided into six components. So there is a north, south organics, a north, south trash and a north, south recycling. The north, south organics occurs. We have those resources. That's all wrapped up. The north recycling drivers and the north trash drivers are just working in the north or on one week, second week they go into the south. So essentially, if we were to add one of those components, we'd either add another 20% or up to 40% of cost because we've got to add more trucks, more people to be able to collect those materials on a weekly basis. So that's the concern about adding additional route, what that would do to the cost and the ability. And we don't, do we know that we're going to get that much more material? Again, recycling, while it may fill up, and I think that we have unlimited recycling, do we not? So people can put out as much as they want on recycling. It doesn't usually have the odor problems that you have. It's usually a space issue, but it's not an odor issue or a vector issue that we would have with something like compostables. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you covered it. Cost was a big issue of why we didn't move forward with every week recycling. Plus it's a dry material typically. So as Martin pointed out, storage for some of our customers, not all. And we do have unlimited, so it wasn't like you're limited to just the 96 gallon cart. Some customers don't even have a 96 gallon cart. They go down to a 35 gallon cart based on their usage. So.
Okay. One last thing before we go. I forgot I lowered my hand too quickly. One last question. From the standpoint of composting, it's kind of that whole thing. I mean, has, have talks kind of gone on about incentivizing compost versus in essence penalizing, you know, not doing it. Hey, you got to keep the trash around for, for that much longer. I mean, I, I don't know if there is something at least maybe to think about. I mean, how to incentivize more, more compost uses versus, you know, look, well, if you don't, you know, you're just going to have stinky trash for two weeks or whatever it is. I mean, I don't know, but it's a thought too.
I, I think the way our rates, rates are structured for trash because it goes off the trash containers, container size. And the larger the trash container, the more you pay. So if you drop down from a 96 to a 64 to a 45 to a 35 to a 20, the more you can reduce your trash container by reallocating those components into the other allowable systems. Then you save yourself money by doing it that way. So that's the financial incentive because again, recycling is unlimited. There's no, it's, it's included in the bundle rates as well as compost is one container, one large 96 gallon container. But you've got a lot of room in there. So I think in fact, you can, if you look at, you'll see a number of people reduce their, their size of their containers. And I think our average container size is 35 gallons, which is different than a lot of cities. A lot of cities at 64 or 96 based on their, their systems.
Okay, thanks. We'll go to Councilmember Perez and then Councilmember Von.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Martin. Very, very good presentation. I really appreciate the opportunities for improvement because they were, all my questions were there and I'm very happy that you you knew that that's where we were going. Yeah, one of the, the, I just want to add a little bit of the conversation that has been happening. When this missing collection happens, we can tell right away which areas of the city are still struggling with organics. And basically it's the south and it's the, all the annex that we start having to divide our garbage since the last five years. So you can see that the lack of education is there. Still, a lot of people don't understand when they say my garbage gets collected every two weeks. They try to explain that is organics get collected every two weeks and we know that that's not true. So I'm sure that you guys heard a lot about this during this past month. Obviously that was the sense on the, on social media as well and the emails that we receive. And it's part of the ongoing education that I agree has to be, has to keep happening. So they understand that they are actually, the garbage is collected every week. Cause as far as we understand as communities called garbage, we don't really go organics or solid waste or, you know, the most that we can separate in our minds sometimes is just, you know, recycling. But, but thank you for the effort. I hope that we can do better to really for the communities to, to know that they do have their garbage pick up every week. It's just certain things that they get picked up every other week. They, the opportunity for improvements, I'm really looking to see that the, the plans that you guys are going to develop. Maybe in six months, I would love to see or reconvene to see where the ideas that are coming. Because even this happened just once a year, normally during the winter. This year was the perfect storm, not pun intended, to go very, very bad. And, and you still write, there were some areas in the city that were impacted harder than others. But the south, the, one of the problems that I saw constantly was communication. It was not just lack of communication, but a lot of miscommunication. And these days where our social media, people take information from everywhere and they pass the communication. And, and I think we need to have a strong message. I was expecting a strong message from, from Republic, but it can never came. And what it come from Republic were a couple of robocalls once in a while. But literally, when I found out that their, the, the, the garbage was not going to be collected was when you sent us an email directly to us to council members and I got it. Okay. So everybody has their garbage cans outside, but nobody's going to collect them in two weeks, right? That's, that's what it is. And we can't, nobody said anything at the time to know that. So communication here I think is key. And I think we should use all this, the outlets that we have, not just go to next door or just go to social media, whatever. All the others that we have because part of the, the problem is was that some of these days were very windy and everybody had their garbage out and everything was blowing everywhere. And nobody even knew that nobody was going to pick up the garbage. So, so, but thank you very much, Martin, for, and your team for being so proactive. And thinking about all these little and big, 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 big things that happen around this, you know, there are a couple of things that really impact our community and definitely this is one of those that, 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 that community demands and deserves the high quality of services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez. And I would certainly second, I heard from more than a few folks on the communication side of things as well too. As far as making that clear next go around, Councilmember Von and then Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few comments and a question or two. I say a two because it's like a half. Want to thank you, Martin, for your work as well as Linda and just the, the whole team with really quick action, right? We were responding to our community needs. But my question is, in terms of public services, it, it seems like it's not just lack communication. It seems like we had to initiate, otherwise they were not going to do anything. Is that correct? Cause it, it seemed that they're very slow in reaching out to us and, and giving us the information that they're not picking up the trash.
In, in terms of the, the snow event, again, that was one that sort of had to be evaluated on a day to day basis. And, you know, it was, you know, we saw the forecast, but we never knew how bad it was going to be, whether the snow was going to break, whether our trucks were able to get in there and start breaking up the ice in the neighborhoods. One of the problems we had in the neighborhoods was our snow plows is we couldn't really plow the roads because of the the plow blades kept bouncing off the ice on the roadway. So, you know, we wanted to leave whatever snow was on there for traction purposes. And, you know, when we're trucks are driving through there, that's where, you know, waistband and these are the public services going behind us and taking a look and see, you know, they drive the neighborhoods because we suggested a number of times that, you know, can you collect downtown residential area? Because our flat streets are not hilly. Some of the areas, we didn't think as much as dangerous, but they were saying that, you know, the amount of snow and ice on those streets and the proximity cars there with the containers, they felt it was a hazardous situation for them to get into. They didn't want to cause damage and running into people's cars, just get off the road and those sorts of things. So, you know, we have to rely on them to make those assessments. And that was going on a day to day basis with the snow. And that's why it was, you kind of get these ups and trail like it was, you know, we're not picking up today. Or we're not picking up today because they would evaluate it every day to make that determination. I think, you know, you know, in terms of the strike event, I think the issue there, we were all sort of perplexed and trying to figure out, okay, the first strike day, how long are you going to strike for? What about the next day? What about the next day? We had contingency plan on Saturday. We didn't know if they were just going to, strikers were going to be there on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. If they were, then we had a contingency plan to have them start collecting refuse, or I should say, we, republic services had a contingency plan, start collecting refuse in the south end on Saturday, but the strikers were there again. So, you know, it wasn't until Monday morning when the republic folks personnel showed up and there was no strikers there that we knew they were even collecting the neighborhoods. And I think that was part of the issue was we knew what the plan was, but we didn't want to make, start making commitments until we knew how many drivers showed up. We knew that there were no strikers there preventing the drivers from coming to play and making sure that they had the resources to get it, to get it there. So I think, you know, it was hard to do it on a, make a plan going forward, saying we're going to be there in five days. But I think we could have done a better job on a day to day basis about outreach. I think one of the other things we heard about with languages too, is that most of the messages that all went out, went out in one language. And that's something we got to work on with them as well as going into multiple languages, certainly reflecting at least the top three languages that are spoken in our community to make sure we can try and catch the majority of people involved. And if we can't, make sure there's a reference of the spot on, on the website so they can go to in other languages and be able to get that information. So the folks that, 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 that have, you know, use other languages as their primary language are able to get the information and, and timing matter as well.
Yeah, I guess my, my main question was just wanted to know because we've had the contract with this company prior to is, has this happened before in, in terms of what has happened in, in the past with the weather and, and how did they deal with it then? Was there any mitigation, right? And then my follow up to that is when does the contract end? Cause I think we renewed it recently, but I can't remember exactly. We can refresh my memory.
So the, the contract ends in 2027. It was executed in 2017, so it's a 10 year contract. And there is no termination provisions unless it's for default. So unless they default on the contract, that's the only way to terminate the contract. Part of that is because the capital equipment involved in, in a collection contract like that, they've got to buy trucks, a lot of trucks and assign them and advertise them over a 10 year period of time, which is one of the ways you reduce your rates. You can advertise it closer over a five year period of time, but it's going to impact how much you pay your rates. So that's kind of why they usually attend your contract. I'll let Linda want to speak to the previous snow events because I wasn't here a few times. So.
We've, we've had short snow events to typically last maybe two, three days or something like that. We, we weren't really impacted because we had, well, we were impacted, but we had the Saturday recovery. So this was unique in that we didn't have the ability to do a Saturday recovery off that snow event. Plus it was a full week of missed collection. The other big major event and some of our council members may remember this is that when we moved to every other week collection prior to the December, prior to implementation of every other week, we had a major snowstorm that impacted residents. It was only like a partial week, but the following week it also impacted, it snowed again and it impacted those same, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday customers again. And we were moving into January, starting And we were moving into January, starting with every other weekend, customers were now very worried about what that would look like. Um, we haven't been impacted significantly by snow and ice. I would say that this was a pretty unique. Uh, weather system and, um, you know, we weren't the only ones, all of Pacific Northwest essentially was impacted. Seattle was still, even though there are weekly garbage collection, they were still crawling out of the problem, you know, three weeks after, so. Uh, and they weren't impacted by the labor strike either, because they used two other residential haulers.
The most recent uh, event was in two thousand and nineteen, when I got a snowstorm similar to what we experienced uh. And thus we could, of last year. And unfortunately, in that event, we also had, could not do a makeup collection on the Saturday. Because the snow was still, it was still snowing, had another storm come through and they couldn't make the roads and, and all we could do was really the. We did the um, alternative drop-off or uh, disposal uh, events as well. Um, but it's definitely, as Martin has talked about, we're, we need to have a better plan and, and really this idea of using. The drivers for one stream to make, do the makeup collections the following week when they can, is, is a good. Uh, you know, uh, something we want to work with Republic Service to implement.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Prince, um, I have you up next. Councilmember Howler, and I saw you had your hand raised. I want to make sure I gave you the opportunity to, you still had a question to go before Councilmember Prince, though. Okay, Councilmember Prince.
Uh, thank you, Mister President, and I will make this brief, because I know we are coming, uh, we are coming close to the end of our time. Um, so I appreciate Renton's uniqueness and how we have done about this. Um, and when people have come up to me and asked me why we're not weekly, the thing that I say to them as well. If we went weekly, your rates would go up. And to a person, they've all said, I'm fine with that. And so what I, I think honestly. We need to have the policy discussion on if we want to change our every other week. Doesn't mean we will, but I think we need to have that policy discussion, what the implications are, what the cost would be. Um, I think that our residents deserve for us at least to have that conversation. Um, so that we can know clear-eyed what it would cost, what it would be and what the impact would be. Uh, to our, to the bottom line and to the rate picking.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. I was gonna ask a question very similar to that, as far as giving, giving um, residents that information, letting them make the decision, or at least help us guide that decision. So I appreciate you making that point. Uh, Councilmember Howler, do you still have a question, comment?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I have two comments that I want to throw out here. Uh, the first is that. When mass communication goes out from the city, we assume uh, technology access. Facebook, social media, websites. Um, and, and, and I think from, from an equity and inclusion perspective. We need to come up with ways to communicate for those people who do, who are, do not have that technology. That's, that's my first comment. My second comment is, um. I think with climate change. I think we gotta assume that these types of events are gonna come around more often. And, you know, what might be a once-in-a-lifetime event. It, it's just not happening anymore. Um, the heat domes, the severe storms that we're seeing are going to be the new normal. So that's, I just want to throw that out there, that, you know, we like to say, oh, that, that's an extremely rare event. Well. Uh, you know, I think we need to start thinking that it's probably not gonna be that rare in the future. And that's, that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Helen, um, and I definitely agree in terms of, uh, you know, the impacts of climate change is certainly something I would like to know. Obviously, it's tied to the conversation of every other week and the, the carbon footprint that we have, I drive the trucks around and making sure we price that if we do. Uh, build that into, I think that's the one follow-up I might add to that is say, if, if we were to look at every other week, I would want to know what the, the, the climate impact was built into that too. To make sure that cost at least was, was captured to that, you know, that that's not something just being absorbed. Uh, cause there would be an impact on that outside of just the fuel prices. So that would be something I would just for sure want to know. But I, I agree with what Councilmember Prince said, and pretty much, I appreciate everyone's questions. I, I think all my questions got asked throughout here too, so. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Prince that we should have that policy conversation as far as, um, you know, listening to residents and, and knowing what. What people are actually wanting, what, what they're willing to pay for and what, what basically provides the services that, that they need, that, that meets their expectations. Cause I would say, uh, to put it bluntly, I don't think people's expectations were met at this time, and I think that's been well recognized, and I appreciate the, the conversation about the solutions, about how we can make it better. Um, but there is definitely some collective disappointment, um, and I didn't have to go very far to find it. So. Um, it, it was certainly a perfect storm. I think that was the perfect way to put it. Um, I, I think, uh, you know, it's a. It would, would be rare that you would have probably all those things kind of coincide again, but I think being, being prepared, you know, learning from this, and I do appreciate the work staff's put into finding a way. So we can uh, make sure something like this doesn't happen again, because uh, uh, that would be, I, I think, probably a, a, a little bit too much. For, for us, this is my, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mister President. Really quick, um, just when, when, uh, when a collection gets missed. Specifically the recycling and the, and the waste. And, and they put out there, say, next week they're gonna collect, not, next time they're gonna collect everything. Residents understood that is next time, meaning next week, instead of understanding that is in two weeks, that that's their turn. So a lot of people put everything out there because they understood that is everything was gonna be collected the next time. I think uh, we need to be more specific, and if we have a plan, if this happened, if we. For that occasion, we actually can make deception of collecting everything that was missed in the following week. I know that you're gonna develop balance, and I just want to throw that out as possible solutions, because. Uh, in the south end was, we went for a month without uh, uh, anybody collecting uh, recyclings and garbage. Thank you.
Yep, I, I, I can't say anymore. Yeah, communication, um, it was, I can tell you, I, I held my cans up and down like, uh. I, two or three times or whatever it was, and people got to the point, they were so confused, they didn't know, do I leave them out? Do I put them back in? Are they gonna come? And of course, they did, they did, they did come. I didn't have them back out yet. I heard the garbage truck coming down the street and I'm running down my driveway with the, the cans, make sure they, thankfully, as you said, it took a little extra time to pick everything up. So, um, we did get it out there, but uh, there was a lot of confusion. So, um, that point is really well taken, and then to reemphasize the point, uh, Councilmember Howler. Put out too, it was like, the channels of communication, you know, it just magnifies that if you can imagine, um, for someone who wasn't monitoring social media or, you know. Ignores the robo, the robocalls or didn't, didn't get them for whatever reason, because it's not a connected um, line. So. Um, I think we have about five more minutes for this, this scheduled before we need to um, break for executive session. So this is the last chance. I'm sure it's not. I should say the last chance tonight. Um, as I expect, this will probably be something we talk more about uh, going forward. But if you have any other thoughts you wanted to get out there or any final questions, now is the time. And I'm not seeing anyone else. So, uh, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the committee and we will recess into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one I for approximately twenty minute, twenty minutes. Uh, no official action will be taken and then we'll return as a regular council uh, at seven PM. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.
Thank you very much.